We with you, Bob, but we just got to work out the issues.
Work it out.
Ma'am, you had your hand up. Did you have something you wanted to say?
I don't think I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. What you got?
Your next on the agenda.
Mike Cooper?
Yeah.
Want to sit here?
He called at 4:15 this morning. He said he was sick and he was sure he wouldn't be able to make it. The only action item he had on his report was for the radiology equipment. We won't take action today. He's not here. I'd rather him be here to explain it. But I will tell you, I went to their meeting on Thursday, and what he is recommending, that we just buy the software right now for it. Problem is, software is more expensive than hardware. You buy the software, now it's over $100,000. That software will be able to transfer to any new equipment we get once we start the building program, okay? But I'll put him on the agenda for next meeting, so just want to let you know that.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? What did we ever do with the generator situation with the hospital? Did we get that taken into account?
Yes, that came up at the meeting too, Commissioner. They're having some problems with it. I just got an email there from Craig. They need an electrical engineer. Arca told me they needed an electrical engineer to install this generator. So, we got a good price, we got a vendor, you guys approved it, but they're catching it to just install this generator. So meanwhile, we're paying, what is it, $900 a week or two thousand five?
So what are they doing now, looking for an electrical engineer to install?
He just emailed asking for one. So I forwarded to Mark while I'm sitting here, see if Mark can help him while I'm in the meeting. We can find one. Yes, ma'am. I gotta answer the question.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Pierce Barrett, DEP presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Pierce Barrett. I'm a professional engineer with the Department of Environmental Protection, and I'm the NERDA project coordinator for all the NERDA projects out of the Deepwater Horizon oil spill under Phase 1, 2, and 3. And just a second, since Michael has the presentation up, I'll begin my presentation.
So, NERDA money is money that came to the state of Florida, which Franklin County's been receiving in a couple of different ways. One is on some of the projects he's talking about. Two is the acquisition or the improvement of the property there at Island View Campground. That's NERDA. And then three is the projects that the county is working with through Pierce's office. The bathrooms on St. George Island, the Lombardi improvements, those things are also NERDA. I will say, and Pierce agrees with this, that this was something that we thought was going to be early restoration, quick to be done. We're now in our fourth year trying to get these things done, so it's been a long slog to get to this point.
Well, if you'll just, when I ask you to advance it, that'll be fine.
Okay. Can I turn these lights off, Michael, or not?
No, I think you guys can hear me.
I'll sit here until we get them. Go ahead.
Okay. The presentation this morning concerns the Cat Point Living Shoreline. Also with me here today, I want to make sure I introduce her, is Jenna Harper, who's the manager of the Aner facility over in East Point. I'm sure you know her better than you know me. This project is an effort with her office and also our office. Deepwater Horizon section is in charge of handling all the money that came out of the oil spill and constructing and taking care of various projects around the Panhandle in the eight counties from Walcoala to Escambia. Some of the projects are for the counties directly and cities, and some of them are being done by the state for state properties. This is a project that is on state property and is being done for the Aner facility, but it is a benefit for Franklin County as a whole, and we wanted to present the project to you guys, to show you the designs at this stage, and get any comments and questions you may have. It's a living shoreline project, which is a project that is being done today to protect shoreline erosion using natural basis to do that, creating salt marsh, and using breakwaters to protect those salt marsh. Go ahead and advance, Michael. It may force me to do this from complete memory. Okay. Again, as I said, the project has two components to it. It's a salt marsh and breakwaters. And the breakwaters are constructed first to allow the salt marsh to develop, and then to protect the salt marsh and erosion from normal waterfront activity. These are not built to protect a shoreline from things such as hurricanes and so forth. In those instances, the water simply overflows the top of the breakwaters and the salt marsh, and then once it retreats, the salt marsh again protects. This is the location of the project. It's in East Point, at the area called Cat Point, right off the front of the Aner facility.
Still not working?
No. That didn't do any good. There we go. Again, the funding is part of the NERDA program. This is an early restoration project, program Phase 3. DEP is responsible for implementing the project. It'll be done through my office, as well as association with the Aner office. I'm the project manager for it. Our consultant is Taylor Engineering, a coastal engineering firm with an office located in Destin in Jacksonville. The budget for this project is a little over half a million dollars. Again, I'm not going to repeat myself. This is the project that I just discussed a second ago. The project has two acres of salt marsh habitat, which would use native vegetation species, and we will also include environmental signs to inform visitors of the value of the salt marsh habitat. These will be located along the shoreline. Project will include, if it, once it's constructed, approximately .53 acres of segmented breakwater, which will be what we call marine mattresses, is a style of construction being proposed. These mattresses are, as I'll show you a picture of later, are composed of rock, limestone, fossilized shell, or processed shell.
And this is, this new breakwater you're building is associated with an existing breakwater that's out there now, right?
There is an existing living shoreline that was constructed back in around 2004, the best of our memory. It was a double type of shoreline protection. One was a rock construction, which is still there, and then it was another construction done with bagged oyster shell. And that was put in place, and of course, as time goes on, those bags have broken open and the shell has been scattered. There will also be warning signs alerting boaters, kayakers, and paddleboarders of the danger of the breakwaters themselves, so that they don't come too close to shore. We found when we built these things, especially one that was built several years ago in Pensacola called the Green Shores Living Shoreline Project, that they've become very popular with kayakers and paddleboarders once they're in place. Also will have warning signs with the breakwaters. The breakwaters intent, and this is how the projects are awarded, is how much marine activity they create, life activity. The breakwaters are not intended to be commercial or privately harvested oyster beds, but they will attract the oyster shell, and they will grow on there, and that's one of the benefits of the breakwaters. That's one of the ways they get scored by the federal agencies and how they got selected for these projects. Other marine activity will take up and colonize in these breakwaters as well, such as crabs, mollusk, and other types. So while they're not intended to be a commercial, and there are signs placed out there for this purpose, warning that these are not commercial oyster reefs, but over time, they're to look like a natural part of the shoreline, not just a rock structure. I know it's a concern for the oyster industry here, and these are not going to be commercial bars. One of the other benefits of the projects, when our consultants were doing their surveys of the site and so forth, we found discarded items out there in the area of the salt marsh, which are not natural, which will be removed, such as discarded tires and other debris. We'll also remove about .046 acres of exotic vegetation that has grown up along the shoreline, so that our native vegetation can take over, and the invasive type vegetation will be removed. All the work on this project will be done from land-based equipment. No barges will be brought in. There's no dredging or filling activity in this project as well. And the construction is definitely not intended to violate any of the state water quality This is a project overview. You can see where the project starts to the north, at the end of the state property, and then goes, continues to the south, again, at the end of the state property. Only, you can see the two sections, we call the north section, which is on the north side of the county's right away. The county has a 50-foot right away there that comes off Melander Street, and we've respected that. There will be no construction in there, because that still can be and probably will be used increasingly by kayakers, canoeers, and paddleboarders in the future as they find out about this shoreline. Again, there is a shoreline to the south. This is the way it looks now. You can see the area there to the lower portion. This is the north section of the site. There is the existing rock breakwaters we were just talking about with Alan just a second ago. And then you can see areas where the tires are located. If I get this to work. No. There. There's little red dots. That's where we found discarded tires, and I think there's some others down in this area. Those will be removed as part of the project. The green represents the existing marsh. This is the conditions on the south, very similar to what you saw on the north side, with the exception, we didn't find some discarded tires and so forth. This is the proposed project to the north. The breakwaters will be approximately 50 feet offshore, and then inside of that, the salt marsh will be created. You can see that there's an area right there, which the salt marsh will be planted in this area. As time goes on, will probably, depending on water depth, will move out to the edges of the breakwater, and the breakwater will be constructed along here. You can see there's gaps in the breakwater. Those are designed through computer modeling to determine, so that water doesn't become stagnant back in the back, that there is a flow of water in and out of this area. The breakwaters are what we call emergent type breakwaters. They're designed to be underwater during periods of high water levels, and then when you have your lower tides, the breakwaters come up out of the surface. That again is one of the ways it prevents these from being your traditional commercial type bars. The oysters just will not grow to the size of commercial harvesting when the beds are coming in and out of the water like that. This is the south end, shows very much the same construction. Again, you can see the gaps between the breakwaters. This is the new marsh, and this is the shoreline vegetation that exists now. These are the breakwaters, as I said, that what you call marine mattress type of construction. Instead of loose rock being brought out and just built and placed down, these mattresses are containment that's built out of a mesh, which is, the material is high-density polyethylene. It's a very strong material. It does not break down and does not become a hazard later on. Being a former design engineer in the areas of solid waste management, I became familiar with this project over 20 years ago in its infancy, and the use of landfills and so forth, and the lifespan of these things has never been determined. It's indeterminate. As you can see, you have the mattress, which is on the bottom. These can either be filled on-site or can be filled off-site and brought. And then once they're put together, they're lifted by crane and then placed out there in the water. Also, a component being considered, depending on budget and so forth, is either by contractor or by Aner personnel themselves, to add a little bit of variation to the way these look, especially until they become inhabited by marine life. We will put bagged oyster connected to the breakwaters to give it that natural look in the beginning of the project. It takes a little while for these to become inhabited completely and covered over with shell, mollusk, crab life, and other types of benthic organisms. Here again, you can see the difference. Here's the new salt marsh. This is the existing vegetation along the shoreline. This will be the new area of salt marsh that will be placed. Again, we're not planning any dredge or fill activity. The water depths are suitable right now for constructing the water marsh. This area will be left unvegetated and see how it moves in later years, and then the breakwater is out here. This is just an example of the type of signs that will be placed in intervals along the breakwaters facing the water, again, to keep boaters who might inadvertently come too close to shore in power boats, and then also to allow, to alert kayakers and others on paddleboarders that these breakwaters are also here. During high tides, those type of boaters can essentially go over the breakwater, and during lower tides, they can paddle in between the breakwater areas. There'll also be signs, very similar, just still have different wording, alerting that these are not commercial oyster bars. The project schedule is we intend to submit for permits, unless there's any real objections about this project, this month. They're ready, we're actually ready to go in for both federal and state permits. We expect to advertise for bids in the fall of 2018. That may seem like a long time, but our experience right now is it takes about a year to obtain the federal permits. We, the state permits probably can be within 60, maybe 90 days. But the Corps of Engineer permit, which also includes consultations with NOAA, Marine Fisheries, Fish and Wildlife Service, et cetera, I experience right now, is it's taking nearly a year to get these permits. We expect a real construction contract in the fall of 2018, and begin construction in the winter of 2019, and be completed in the latter part of the spring of 2019. And the winter is an ideal time for us to construct this project, because like we said, it's all land-based, so the type of equipment we're envisioning to be used on this project is that type of equipment. As you may have seen, work in other wetted areas, they can work in up to maybe two and three feet of water. They're low-pressure, wide-track type systems, and they will cause little or no damage to the existing shoreline. Any damage that does occur, of course, contractors require to come back and take care of that problem. And that's... I'll get this button right soon. And that concludes my presentation, ladies and gentlemen. If you have any questions or comments, I'm here to entertain them, and as Michael has said in his report to you, I'll stay around till after his report, should you have any questions on the other NERDA projects in the county.
The board of committee, I'm going to handle that right now. If you have no questions on this particular project.
Any board members have questions on this?
I got one. How long that pool to last, though? I mean, after y'all get to get it constructed and everything? What the life expectancy?
The life expectancy, that's the reason it's being designed, is to be indefinite. It's, the breakwaters are being designed to be sustainable structures that can endure the type of wave action and storms we've seen out there. The marsh may have to be replanted at various times, but that's a state project, and it'll be maintained by the state in the Aner facility out on East Point.
So the state picked this project, right?
The state picked this project. It was submitted by the DEP itself, and it was chosen by the selection committee, which included, I say selection committee, included at that time, all the states along the Gulf of Mexico, Texas through Florida, as well as five federal agencies.
Y'all got some move y'all picked? Y'all got some move y'all picked for this area?
Well, we have, there's also five projects, which Mr. Morona reported on, that are county projects, that the state is building for the county. And then, of course, you know, step, a little step ahead, the final settlement was reached, let's see, a year ago now, with the court system in New Orleans, as you may remember, the final settlement with BP was achieved. And so for the next 15 years, beginning in 2017, the state will receive a payment from, through this funding, same funding process, NERDA, for the next 15 years. And there will be many more projects that will be developed over the next 15-year period.
But the county won't have no input in on them, right?
Oh, the county has input in on them. The county submitted the other four projects which were selected.
Oh, but that...
Well, there are several that we, because there are many people who wanted to make improvements in the area, Commissioner, so like the NERDA, and I don't really know who selected this, who proposed this initially? It could have been the Aner staff, it could have been someone in the DEP, knowing there's already a breakwater out there, knowing the state of Florida already had a facility there. So that got there, but as an example, the old Causeway to St. George Island, that is also a NERDA project. That's one that we didn't select, but I guess it was, Arca was the sign of somebody. So they're going to rebuild the shells out there for bird habitat. So there'll be a number of projects you see going on in the community that are being funded by this, that we didn't necessarily submit, but someone else did and got funded. What I'm leading to, when I'm sort of jumping into this, is that there could be another living shoreline project coming down the pipeline. It is something that we've talked about. We had one initial meeting over at Aner just last week, and that would be some shoreline stabilization between East Point and Carabel, where you have all this erosion, where DOTs are, where we put rock in there. And so we're looking at that as another potential shoreline stabilization area, trying to create some habitat there, so you just don't have raw rocks right on the edge of the ocean. The challenge there is to find someone who would manage that project and put it in place, because, my proposal, which I don't know if it'll be acceptable to anybody, is have the state forest come in there, because the state forest, Takesale State Forest comes down to the highway right there. So there, they could be a managing agent over there. But we talked about it, and so the people who are proposing that project are kind of going through, trying to figure out, you know, who could assist in creating that project. So there are some other living shoreline projects in the works, but this is the only one that's been funded at this point.
Well, no, there are other living shoreline projects. Let me just clarify. No, I don't mean to contradict Alan. They're just not in this county. Yeah, we're building a large living, larger living shoreline project over in Pensacola Bay as well.
Do y'all do beach re-nourishment?
Beach re-nourishment under NERDA, with the exception of one project that is being done, are not allowed. Under NERDA, which has some very strict guidelines, yeah, if you're talking about Alligator Point, no, that's not, because you can't take beach re-nourishment and tie it into the oil spill. The oil spill didn't cause beach erosion. But what we have to have, now let me, I'll step on, I know what your question is going to be. Living shorelines are an environmental, there are two types of projects under NERDA. There are environmental projects, such as the living shorelines, dune re-vegetation projects, seagrass restoration projects, and so forth. And then there are recreational component projects, which are like, here in this county, the waterfront project, waterfront park project, or Lombardi property, the Indian Creek Boat Ramp, and other projects. Those are recreational components. Projects have to be tied in, I'm not going to pull this out, but for NERDA, they have to increase activity or improve water quality for the Gulf, or direct activity. So for a recreational project, a project, say, way up in Takesale Swamp, probably wouldn't qualify, because it's not improving recreational access for visitors and residents to the Gulf of Mexico. Environmental projects or beach restoration or re-nourishment projects don't. There is a beach re-nourishment project, and I'm not exactly sure, I wasn't on the selection group, that is being done at Shell Point in Walcoala County. And there is a beach stabilization project, but it has recreational components that is currently underway in Destin, Florida. But those, but to just do straight beach re-nourishment projects have, to this point, have not been acceptable. Now, under other programs, and I'm not going to get into Restore, or get into some others, such as NIFWIF and so forth, that I'm not really qualified to answer your questions on, and I don't handle those projects, but they have a different qualification measures on how you, how those projects are adapted and selected.
Mr. Chairman? We've got all these projects being done by all these agencies, and we don't know what, you know, it's sort of like the left hand not knowing what the right hand's doing, or backing and forwards, whatever. And I can say that some of these projects are going to be good for the Apalachicola Bay, but some's going to be a little, a little, too little, too late. And because of the situation with the Apalachicola Bay like it is now, you know, we appreciate these projects, but at the same time, we realize too, that some of them is just a little bit too late. So, you know, that's just my comment. But I can tell you, we've seen dramatic changes in the past 10 years in Apalachicola Bay. I think there's more to come. We're going to be able to do what we have to do to take care of the bay. You know, we've got to get these projects going. We've got to keep them going. So, anyway, that's my comment.
Any other comments? Oldman, Michael, what do you?
All right, Commissioners, if you look on number three on my report, Mr. Barrett has some inside information too, so that's why I'm doing it while he's here. But I'm going to start off with good news, and it's going to get progressively worse as we go down the list. Indian River Creek Boat Ramp was the first of the NERDA projects that went to bid. HD Harder's was a low bid of $529,589, and will be awarded to construction contract. Construction should start in October. Next project, there was only one bid received for what they call waterfront park, we call it Lombardi Park, in the amount of $594,135 from North Florida Construction. DEP will rebid that project with the hope of receiving more competitive bids. All permits have been received, permits received and plans along with specifications, they are at 100% complete for the St. George Island Fishing Pier Restroom and the East Point Fishing Pier Restroom projects. However, there will be a slight delay in advertising these projects. FDP, Division of State Lands, has determined that the state, not the county, still owns the property where the restrooms will be constructed. Mr. Kurigan has been in contact with Mr. Brad Richardson of DEP, who will get the appropriate information on the Board of Trustees, the State Lands' October meeting agenda. It is unclear at this point if the state will retain ownership of the property, but authorize Franklin County the use of the property, and then approve the request for the restrooms, or transfer the property to Franklin County. And finally, DEP informed staff that the total cost of the project was $927, actually $928, $100,000 over budget. Based on discussions with Mr. Jim Oskowitz, the project manager, and after conferring with Commissioner Jones, I decided to indefinitely suspend the seawall replacement project, which is next to the boat ramp on St. George Island. This action would reduce the amount of our deficit to $337,000, which is an amount that DEP is willing to allow implementation of the remaining projects. If you have any additional questions, Mr. Barrett is here, and he can answer those questions this morning. Am I about accurate? You think?
That's correct. I just want to add one thing. That $900 and some odd thousand dollars is a summation of all the projects that are Franklin County projects have totaled up to be over the original requested budget. And one of the things we've seen, and you see it on your county contracts, since about 2014, 2015, construction prices have gone skyward. We find that on our projects, as much as you find them on yours. Very seldom we find that one of our projects has come in under budget. But what we're doing is trying to utilize interest monies that have been accumulating from the BP, early restoration funds, as well as some projects were dropped out of the mix of projects due to either they were completed by the individual county, city, agency, whatever, on its own funding, or we have, you know, they've just, projects have been dropped off. So that's where we're trying to make up some of this funding. It's unfortunate. These are not legislative funds. We can go back to the legislation and say, can you give us more money to build these projects, because now they're costing more? We have a set amount of money that was provided by BP in the early restoration, and that's what we're trying to work with. So we're not only engineers and project managers anymore, we're now money managers, trying to find ways to build these projects. So if the money, so to speak, from the seawall at the, at the bridge over by the boat ramp is put on indefinite hold, we'll probably use that money to make sure we get these other projects, Indian Creek, waterfront, or Lombardi Park, and the two restrooms constructed as well. Our living shoreline project has not fallen that mix. They're not, it's not a county project. That's another issue itself. Should it be over budget? We don't expect it to be.
I guess y'all got a set amount, y'all going to spend it?
We got, the amount of money we're going to spend here, sir, is the amount of money that was requested in the budget submitted by the county that were accepted as projects, plus where they're over budget, we're going to try to find additional funding within that early restoration money to build these projects, as they were submitted, without major changes.
Hopefully, we'll get better bids at Lombardi Park with that rebid.
Yeah, we've had, I mean, it's surprising what you see out there. I had a project last week that bid over in Santa Rosa County. Its budget was 2.5 million. You would have thought you would have generated a significant number of bid applicants. We had over 10 contractors at the pre-bid meeting. We had over 10 contractors at the pre-bid meeting. I received two bids on that project. So that's sort of what we're seeing. Waterfront Park, we had eight contractors come to the pre-bid meeting. One contractor submitted bids. So we're hoping that, you know, we'll go back with additional budget for this project and go through it again, because the bid was very high compared to the initial budget on that project, almost double the initial budget. The architects have been tasked to go back and reevaluate their designs, to see if there's any ways to value engineering this project anymore, but we're going to bid it, we are going to build it, but we're going to try to get a better fee in there and then supplement it wherever we can.
You think the cost of living, I mean, you think the cost went up ever since y'all go by you?
Well, Commissioner Barrett, I'd like to answer that, because I helped put together these cost estimates. Again, these cost estimates were put together three, four years ago. I don't...
The cost, for the projects that were submitted, they were, the spill began in 2010, and the state started receiving project applications in 2011. So some of those are four to five years old, and some of these projects are coming off applicant's shelves, so to speak. There were projects that had been designed previously for a county or city to build. They didn't have money to build them, because as you well know, in 2008, the recession hit, and a lot of money was not available anymore for... So we've got projects out there that have eight-year-old cost estimates, and some of them, the cost estimates were made during the recession, in which construction prices had taken a tremendous dive.
Well, and we, we, we had a very, a short window to get these things in there. We didn't know when the money was going to be coming through, so we were, we were making it the best as we could. I won't say on the back of a post-it, you know, envelope, but they were not, all the cost estimates were not engineered through to, to details that we now have to go through with bidding costs. So there was some big gaps in, you know, in understanding of depth of the project. So, but we did the best we could.
One comment I'd like to make real quick on the living shorelines, and it's not just this particular project, it's the other one we're talking about between East Point and Carabel, as, as these oysters grow on these things. If somebody goes in there and takes some of those oysters out and puts them in a bag of oysters that they actually sell to a dealer, or somebody gets sick off of them, that illness still counts against the state of Florida, which makes, you know, if we get over a certain threshold, then FDA comes down and imposes more regulations. That's a concern for me with, with the living shoreline. It's not the native vegetation, it's that these oysters do grow on these different things, and if they're, go down Middle Street, and they pick up some of these things in the middle of the night and put it in their oyster bag, somebody gets sick off of it, it's going to cause more de-cromy measures on the industry as a whole. So I just want to put that out on the record. I'm not opposed to living shoreline per se, but I'm worried about the impacts of some of the people in the local industry not being as, as cautious as they should be when they go in there and look at some of these, oh, man, that's a big pretty oyster, it's got to be good. Well, it does, and oysters are huge for water quality, which is what they do for this whole bay. I understand the effects of it, the benefits of it, but I understand the downside to if they're accessed by commercial fishermen, and then so is a consumable product. So that's something I would caution. I know you don't have signs up there. I know you've got breakwaters. Hopefully, they won't cross over the breakwaters, but just as you're going to construct them from the landward side, they can be accessed by the landward side. So that's, that's a huge issue for me. So you don't, we don't necessarily need, well, we do need signage from the outside and from the bayside, but you also need signage on the north side to, and I hope people are listening and take this warning to heart, because it happens. There's some areas in this bay that are absolutely closed year-round, but there ain't no oysters there no more where to go. So we have issues amongst our community in these living shorelines, so I hope this thing is properly monitored and, and the proper signage is there, and I hope people heed to warn it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we respect your concerns about it, and we have the same concerns you do. We don't want to harm the oyster industry in the same way. We do feel this is a better solution for shoreline erosion than some of the hard structures we've seen in the past, and we will do the best we can. Final designs will be brought to you again. Any comments or suggestions y'all have as far as the signage is concerned, we'll be taking those into account and, you know, definitely include that in the final designs of the project, because, now, I didn't mention, you mentioned monitoring, that's one thing. Now, this is not police monitoring, and I'm talking about, I'm talking about biological monitoring, but these projects are also, will be monitored by staff at the Aner facility for a period, I think it's 10 years. So we'll be looking at, you know, how well certain things go. Are these oysters going to commercial size, or, and our expectations, they won't go to commercial size due to the type of, excuse me, the type of, you know, breakwater they are. If they're not a submerged breakwater, they're an emergent, they go in and out of the water. And my, I'm an engineer, not a biologist, but my knowledge is that prohibits the commercial growth, where we will have a growth of mollusk and so forth, and oysters on these reefs, as they call them, or breakwaters, they won't be commercial size, and then we'll have to trust that your wholesalers don't buy oysters they shouldn't, and that our counterparts at FWC, who check on that, will do their job and make sure that undersized oysters aren't being harvested and sold.
Any other comments, Mr. Pierce? We do appreciate you coming in and giving us this update today.
Thanks, sir.
The board will take a recess.